Thank you. All I have to do is say, gentlemen, are you ready? And the room just gets quiet as a mouse.
That's what power looks like.
The time is 6:00 PM and the regular meeting of the Denison City Council is now in session. Our invocation this evening will be given by Rodney Ward, pastor of Harless Memorial United Church.
Well, first, as pastor of the Harless Memorial United Methodist Church and a member of the Ministerial Alliance, I want to thank you for allowing us to open this city council and most city councils with a Christian prayer. So, thank you for that. Let's pray. Dear Lord, we are here to discuss topics that will benefit the people in Denison and Grayson County. We want to think about how we can make life easier for everyone. Come and give us wisdom to make the right decisions. Let us not make biased decisions, but decisions based on solving the problems of your children. Be our leader during this meeting. Show us, because you have chosen us to be here. Give us direction and let us not think with our own selfish interest. Open our eyes to spiritual solutions and help us make our country, our county, and our city incredible. I pray that the citizens will be in prayer, praying for the government to do that which is right in your eyes. Lord, as we approach the end of the calendar year and the celebration of your birth, I pray for Janet Gaud that her leadership guides the city in your ways. I pray for the council, Michael Courtwright, James Thorne, Josh Massey, Robert Crawley, Aaron Thomas, and Brian Hander to have courage and wisdom. And Lord, I lift up the rest of your staff for their mission to the city. Reading from First Timothy 2:2. For all that are in authority, that we may lead a quiet and peaceful life in all godliness and honesty. May the Lord bless you all. Merry Christmas. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. This evening, we are honored to have with us a veteran, Bill Aiken, who is with the American Legion Post Number 62, who will lead us in our pledge of allegiance. Anytime you're ready, sir.
If you are a veteran, you may salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored to take this flag, I pledge allegiance to the United States of Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, sir. We have a very special proclamation this evening. You know, last year, we celebrated our sesquicentennial, 150 years as a city. Well, one year after we were founded as a city, St. Luke's Episcopal Church was founded. So, this is their sesquicentennial. In this 150 years, St. Luke's Church has done so many things for this community, for its parishioners. There would be no way to list all the things. But what we do know is that they have faithfully served their parishioners. They have faithfully served the children of our community by establishing a school that helps to educate our future leaders. And they have faithfully ministered to those who are less fortunate in many, many ways. And for all of this, we're very grateful. And we have with us tonight Stephen Walker, who is the, Stephen Walker Senior, who is the warden at St. Luke's Episcopal, and Thomas Redwine, who is a vestry member. And if they'll meet me at the podium, I'll have a very special proclamation to read. He'll turn around then. Look at Mary, because she's going to want to take pictures while we're reading this. Whereas, St. Luke's Episcopal Church, who has been a beacon of faith and community and a cornerstone of our city, is commemorating its 150th anniversary in December of 2023. The organization of St. Luke's occurred in 1873 without any contract with or support from a diocese. Technically, Denison fell within the confines of the Diocese of Texas, whose bishop was located at the other end of the state in Houston, who had little interest in events in Denison. And whereas the General Convention of 1874 in New York City remedied this ecclesiastical isolation from North Texas, it split the area away from the Diocese of Texas, creating the Missionary District of North Texas under the direction of the Reverend Alexander Garrett, who would later serve as the first bishop of Dallas and the 14th presiding bishop of the National Church. Although unaffiliated with the diocese, St. Luke's was functioning as a parish, owned real estate, and was in the process of building its sanctuary by virtue of the legal existence provided by its civil articles of association. And whereas this of Garrett moved quickly to legitimize this state of affairs ecclesiastically by approving St. Luke's as a mission on February the 5th, 1875. Then several months later, at the first opportunity, Garrett elevated the church to full status as a parish in the Missionary District of North Texas. This chain of events has given St. Luke's an unusual financial relationship to a diocese that has continued to the present day. And whereas, by the end of the 19th century, St. Luke's Church has become a congregation of 150 communicants and attracted a diverse group of parishioners who represented the cosmopolitan nature of Denison as a regional transportation and commercial center, including employees of railroad company, teachers, attorneys, physicians, and business people. In some cases, the great grandchildren of these early parishioners are present-day communicants at St. Luke's. And whereas, St. Luke's Parish Day School opened in 1959 during this period of expansion, providing kindergarten through early elementary education for children in Grayson County. Over the years, St. Luke's School has prospered and grown. The school has about 50 students, employs a full-time headmaster, a full office staff, and teaches, offering instructions from pre-kindergarten through pre-K4. Whereas, over the past century and a half, St. Luke's Church has played a vital role in the lives of countless individuals, offering solace in times of sorrow, celebration in times of joy, and unwavering support throughout the seasons of life. The leadership, clergy, and dedicated members of St. Luke's Church have worked tirelessly to create a welcoming and inclusive environment that reflects the value of love, compassion, and service to others. Now therefore I, Janet Gaud, as mayor, and on behalf of the City of Denison, Texas, do hereby honor and recognize the 150th anniversary of St. Luke's Church as a momentous occasion and encourage all residents to express gratitude for the positive impact St. Luke's Church has had on our community and extend heartfelt congratulations to the leadership and members of St. Luke's Church. Signed, Janet Gaud, Mayor, City of Denison. Congratulations, gentlemen.
Thank you.
And thank you for all that St. Luke's does for our community.
Well, we consider to be an honor of what people before us have done, and we look forward to filling the shoes that they have left us to walk in.
That's great, and you're doing that. So, Mary, do you have all the pictures you want?
One more with everybody looking at me.
Well, okay. All right. Thank you again.
Thank you, ma'am.
I thought it was time to dance.
Me too.
Thought we were going to have a little addition to the agenda tonight, Chris. All kidding aside now, at this point in every meeting, we set aside time for any citizen to speak on any item on the agenda that is listed as an action item. In order to speak, you must fill out a request to speak card and turn it in before we get to this point in our meeting. Tonight, we have one request to speak on items 6C and 6D. Sir, would you like to speak now or would you like to speak when this comes up before the council and the agenda?
Your choice, however Roberts' rules require.
You're at the podium, so give us your name and address for the record, please.
Certainly, mayor, council members, city staff. Let me be one of the first ones to say Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays. I thought my tie might be a little wild, but I see I didn't have to worry about that. I am Kurt Chikowski. I live at 1419 West Woodard here in Denison, and I'm here representing your Historic Preservation Board. And I'm addressing Agenda Items 6C and 6D. I'm commending your specific attention to and anticipating your positive concurrence of both items. As Mrs. Dowell outlined, over nine months ago, the process to update and provide fuller guidance in the historic preservation area began. An ad hoc task force of city council members, city staff, a historic preservation consultant, and other city committee and board members started meeting to take on the effort to make ownership in Denison's historic district overlay a much more transparent and easier-to-navigate endeavor for owners, developers, builders being attracted to our city while maintaining our historic heritage. This effort was to support the stated position that resolved the city Denison, Texas, hereby declares that as a matter of public policy, the protection, enhancement, and perpetuation perpet- ongoing commitment to districts and landmarks of historic and cultural importance and significance are necessary to promote the economic, cultural, educational, and general welfare of the public, with one of the intentions is to protect and enhance the city of Denison's attractiveness to visitors and to support and stimulus of the economy thereby provided. For the 30-block area of our downtown, we've applied for in 1983, and we have been recognized therefore as a National Registry of Historic Places. These two documents, under consideration, the Revised City Ordinance, Chapter 30, and the Historic Preservation Guidelines, provide the rules and procedures notifying what building owners, builders, and developers need to know concerning the U.S. Department of Interior conditions. Requirements that, if met, will provide or could provide tax incentives to assist in restoring, renovating, or rehabilitating our downtown area, as the Denison Hotel and the Travelers Hotel has found out. And they will also ensure that we remain qualified as a National Registry of Historic Places. These two documents will also be the standard that your Historic Preservation Board will use to guide us in the decisions regarding approvals for the downtown construction projects regarding buildings within the designated historic preservation overlay. Therefore, Agenda Items 6C and 6D are the result of nine months of focused effort by a myriad of individuals and organizations to ensure Denison's future while retaining its historical significant past. I therefore request your favorable consideration of both these Agenda Items in the section for individual consideration, and I thank you.
Thank you, sir. Item four, consent agenda.
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Crawley and a second by Councilmember Hander. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item 5A, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on ordinance to rezone property legally described as a 3.513-acre tract being located partially in the IG Belcher survey abstract number 133 and partially in the William Odom survey abstract number 919, Grayson County, Texas, according to the deed recorded in volume 3183, page 929. Deed records of Grayson County, Texas, being commonly known as 2700 South Fannin Avenue, GCAD property ID number 150060 from the local retail district partially within the Austin Avenue overlay district to the single-family five SF5 district partially within the Austin Avenue overlay district to allow for residential use, case number 2023-105Z. Ms. York.
Good evening, mayor and council. Sorry, I don't have my clicker. Um, this is a, the applicant is requesting a rezone of the subject property, commonly known as 2700 South Fannin Avenue, from the local retail zoning district to SF5. The area, thank you, Chris. The area has been predominantly developed in a residential manner, as has the subject property. There is a house currently on the property, and it was built per the project narrative sometime around 1910. There's an aerial zoning view of that of the area. The applicant wishes to pursue a rezoning so that the property is more in line with how it has been developed, and then also upon zoning approval, they will move forward with requesting a minor plat to subdivide that property into three lots, with one of those lots housing the existing house. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the request at their meeting held on December 12th, and staff also recommends approval of the request. I don't believe that the applicant is here, but I am present to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for Ms. York.
I've had several of the constituents on the South Fannin side, right behind that property, discuss some issues with the road that's back there. So, if we add, so coming down South Fannin, yeah, that it's been deteriorated a little bit and that it's dangerous for some of the, I mean, there's several 80-year-olds and so forth that are in there that walk up and down the street. They're concerned about the condition of that, and if you have additional housing units developed, that there's, that there would need to be something done there. Is there any, do you know of any city plans to resurface that anytime soon?
Sure, I'm not aware of any. That's something that we can definitely discuss with Public Works. I know that there's been substantial development on that north side corrective Fannin, so that might be something that we can have a discussion with them on. Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. York? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Discussion from council. A motion.
Mayor, I move to approve changing the zoning of the subject property from the local retail zoning district to the SF5 single-family residential zoning district.
Second.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Crawley and a second by Councilmember Thomas. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item 5B, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on an ordinance to rezone a 3.213-acre tract legally described as being part of the MC Davis survey abstract number 336 and being all of the 2.33-acre tract of land conveyed by deed without warranty from the Union Pacific Railroad Company to the City of Denison, Texas on February the 18th, 1999, and recorded in volume 2771, page 355, and being all of the .88-acre tract of land conveyed to the City of Denison, Texas by affidavit of lost deed on February the 17th, 2023, as recorded in instrument number 2023-4052, Grayson County, Texas, GCAD property ID number 438291 and 438292 from the single-family 7.5 residential district within the highway-oriented and corridor district to the commercial zoning district within the highway-oriented and corridor district to allow for retailer-commercial use, case number 2023-109Z. Ms. York, can you make that any clearer?
I would love to, yes, ma'am. Yes, and thank you. You did such a good job. I'm so sorry. The applicant is requesting a rezone of the subject property from the single-family 7.5 zoning district to commercial, to allow for retailer-commercial space. This is the property that sits in between the West End Fire Station and Simmons Bank across from Chick-fil-A, although Chick-fil-A is not on that map. This property does fall within the highway-oriented and corridor overlay district, and this request does comply with the future land use plan as this area has been designated as mixed-commercial use. And so, with that, staff does recommend approval of the request to rezone to the commercial zoning district, and so did the Planning and Zoning Commission at their meeting held on December 12th. I'm present for any questions you may have, and the applicant is here for, if you have any questions of them.
Questions for Ms. York? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Discussion from council. A motion.
Mayor, I move to approve the changing of the zoning of the subject property from the SF 7.5 single-family residential zoning district to the commercial zoning district.
There was a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Crawley and a second by Councilmember Courtwright. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item 6A, I need to recuse myself and leave the dias. This item will be facilitated by Mayor Pro Tim Crawley.
Number six, items for individual consideration. 6A, receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on awarding a bid and entering into a contract with SF Landscaping for the 2023 Utilities Mowing and Maintenance Program, and authorize the interim city manager to execute the same.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tim and council. I'm Chip Egger with the Parks Department for the City of Denison. Earlier this fall, staff advertised seeking services to help with the city's mowing needs at our utility sites. During that advertisement, we had 15 applicants pick up packages. Of those 15, three submitted successful bids. Those were scored by staff, and the scoring came in with SF Landscape being the highest in the scoring based on pricing, contractor qualifications, and their work plan individual for those sites. Staff recommends entering into an agreement with SF Landscape based on their highest score. I'm present for any questions that you may have.
Any questions from council? If not, thank you, Chip. Appreciate it. Any discussion from council? If not, I'll call for a motion.
Mayor Pro Tim, I move to approve awarding a bid and entering into a contract with SF Landscaping for the 2023 Utilities Mowing and Maintenance Program, and authorize the interim city manager to execute the same.
Second.
Motion by Hander, second by Thomas to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes, and I'll bring the mayor back.
Item 6B, receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on awarding a request for proposal and entering into a contract with Denison Animal Welfare Group, otherwise known as DOG, for animal shelter services, and authorize the interim city manager to execute the same. Chief Gudgel.
Mayor and council, the city's had a longstanding contract for the animal shelter services with Morton Street Animal Hospital. In May of 2018, the city hired a consultant to evaluate the needs of our animal services. Based on the report and the continued growing needs of the city, as it relates to animal services, staff felt it was time to work on preparing a request for proposal for animal shelter services. On October 6th, 2023, the RFP was issued with responses due no later than October 24th. The city reviewed the two proposals in response to the RFP, one from Denison Welfare Group, DOG, and the other from Morton Street Animal Services. A selection committee was put together to evaluate the proposals. The committee also made an onsite visit to each of the facilities at DOG and Morton Street Animal Hospital. Following the onsite visits, review of the submitted proposals, and scoring of the proposers, the committee recommended awarding the animal services contract to DOG. The initial contract, I'm sorry, the new contract with DOG will cost $180,000 annually. $151.5 is currently budgeted for this service in the general fund. The remaining cost of the budgeted amount would need to come out of fund balance. Following the onsite visits, again, review, submitted proposals, the scoring, and the proposers, the committee recommends awarding to DOG. Staff recommends awarding the request for proposal and entering into a contract with DOG. I'm here for any questions.
Questions for Chief Gudgel? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
Discussion from council. A motion.
Mayor, I move to approve awarding the request for proposal and entering into a contract with the Denison Animal Welfare Group, the AWG, for an animal shelter services, and authorize the interim city manager to execute the same.
Second.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Crawley and a second by Councilmember Thorne. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item 6C, receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on an ordinance repealing and restating Chapter 30 of the Code of Ordinances, the same being the Historic Preservation Ordinance of the City of Denison. Ms. Dowell.
Thank you, mayor and council. As has been reported, we have been working on this for quite some time, and we are very proud of our historic building stock in downtown. I think it's one of the most charming things about our city. And so, fortunately, in the 1980s, Denison took measures to protect that building stock. And so, in the last two years, we've updated our website with a video that the mayor was in. And we've also placed deed restrictions on the properties, and we've updated the city zoning map, so they will show that it's a historic district. So, as you can tell, we took many measures to try to let everybody know that they are in a historic district. I'm sure there are many more that we can continue to do, but these were at the top of the list. We also updated the ordinance, as you will see the first item tonight, and then our design guidelines. Some of the things that are different in the ordinance, it's not making wholesale changes. It's just strengthening the information available. And one of the things was adding a six-month deadline. Instead of the permission being granted indefinitely, it's given the applicant six months, and then they can ask for renewing that six months. We've updated it to comply with the Texas Local Government Code. So, if you add a property or a district, now we didn't, you know, we just said anybody could add it. The Texas Local Government Code has since come through and stated the way that it must be done, and so our ordinance will now comply with that. Also, we tightened the definition of routine maintenance and stated specifically what that is, so people in the district will know. And then, for emergency repairs, the Historic Preservation Officer can approve those. So, you know, you don't have to wait for a meeting if it is, in fact, an emergency repair. And then outline the post-demolition requirements, especially including fencing. So, whether we have a fire or another catastrophe caused by weather or whatever, we've stated what must happen so we can get buildings put back in those places, and it doesn't, you know, doesn't look like a distraction to our district. And that's, that's all I had to say about that. I will tell you that our, the participants in these, the ordinance and the design guidelines, we had a lot of staff. We had our development services team. We had the fire marshal, all the staff that typically participates in that type process. We also were a part of the certified local governments of the state of Texas through the Texas Historic Commission. of the state of Texas through the Texas Historic Commission. And so we ran our changes by them. And, you know, they're, they're the ones besides our attorneys that said that the Texas Local Government Code, uh, needed to be added. And then we had, uh, our consultant, Rosam Preservation, that also assisted with it and, and gave, um, guidance. And Councilmember Hander also participated in it. And tonight, we have two, uh, Historic Preservation Board members, Linda Anderson and Mr. Chakowski that, uh, came before you. And, um, I can tell you that he was available in, um, reviewing this ordinance as well. So that's all I have. If you'd like to ask questions, I can answer those.
Questions for Ms. Dow?
First of all, Donna, I'd like to say thank you to you and your team as a participant in the historic preservation process in Dennison to my profit, hopefully to the cities as well. I appreciate the way that you guys have been hand-in-hand with the developers. And I like to see that it's codified so that we don't lose those assets irreparably. So thank you for all of your, all of your work. Um, and I'm glad you guys added the six-month deadline so that we can keep these guys focused on, on moving forward. I would make sure it's a point that there's a better understanding of how long the process actually takes in today's market with lending and so forth. So I like how the six months is a renewable. So thank you for putting that together. Um, and for, I, what I would really like to see is that this is a bigger part of the branding for what Dennison is pushing. Folks like me who come to town to invest in, in these historic properties. Because this is, 61% of your money can come back to you if you do it right and you do it to the, the right process. So, you know, having somebody like Mary with her experience and, and with your passion and your team you're building, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Questions? Thank you. Discussion from council?
Just the big thing that you'll see is we tried to make it easier. That was something we wanted to make the language easier to understand, the process a little easier to do. We did some things where now the Historic Preservation Officer can approve certain types of signage, that kind of thing, so that we're not holding businesses back. Um, and then, you know, like any good code that had been added to throughout the years, it kind of contradicted itself near the end. So we kind of had to fix that a little bit. But everything was to make this a more smooth transaction for everybody. So it was a good process.
Okay. Having said all of that, a motion?
Mayor, I move to adopt the ordinance repealing and restating Chapter 30 of the Code of Ordinances, the same being the Historic Preservation Ordinance of the City of Dennison.
Second.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Crowley and a second by Councilmember Hander. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item 6D, receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on a resolution adopting design guidelines for the Historic Preservation District. Ms. Dow?
Thank you. So this is just part B to that process. These are guidelines which give, um, some instructions and how-to and, um, you know, just information to the, uh, property owners, the applicants, uh, whoever applies. And we took the, well, the, we added maps and explained the differences in those maps. So the Texas Historical Commission, when we, when we, um, did our National Register District, they had a certain map. That's not the same as our Commercial Historic Overlay District, which has to go by the, um, the guidelines in this. That is a larger, it's squared off. And so it explains those differences in there. And, um, just wanted to show that so that people would know what, what the difference is. Uh, we also updated the Energy Efficiency Section. That wasn't as much of an issue, uh, in the 80s and, and 2003. And so we, um, added some information there. We added reference to our public art guidelines that we have now. Um, not a lot of detail, but just reference to it that they'll know, um, that it's in there. And then we moved the color scheme. The, the council, um, a couple of years ago, looked at colors. And we moved that part from the ordinance to the design guidelines, which we feel is a much better place for it. And then we, um, updated and, and added an explanation on windows. Um, a lot of people modify their windows. And it kind of gives, uh, pictures and a little bit more guidance on what they can and cannot do, um, to maintain our historic district. And so that's, um, that's really my presentation. Again, I'll answer any questions if you have them.
Questions for Ms. Dow?
I have one for Ms. Tate. Um, so when you go through the energy efficiency and the construction process, a lot of times you're doing a remodel on the inside of a building. And if you're adding a residential to an otherwise previously non-residential, you normally would go through a new construction permit in some cases to meet current code. The energy efficiency of the windows and the, the insulation and so forth make it almost impossible to meet envelope requirements. So are you comfortable, as we move forward with these, having it be a remodel permit as opposed to a new construction permit, even if all of what's being built is new to that structure?
Yes, we talked about all of that.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you.
Any further questions for Ms. Dow or Ms. Tate? Discussion from council? A motion?
Mayor, I move to adopt the Historic Preservation Design Guidelines as presented.
Second.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Crowley and a second by Councilmember Massey. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Donna and team, congratulations.
Thank you.
And thank you for all your hard work to helping us move forward. Item 7A, receive a report and hold a discussion regarding the Katy Trail project. Mr. Eastwood?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Privileged to be here. Um, I, I get to talk about one of our great features here at the city. That's the Katy Trail, in particular Phase 2. There's been some action since I last came to council. If you remember right, uh, Loy Lake, we finished Phase 1. So we're looking to do Phase 2 between Loy Lake, um, and Spur 503. So that's what I'm specifically discussing tonight. Staff attended a virtual workshop today. Out of that workshop, we actually plugged into a few additional workshops early next year. Uh, the big thing that, uh, came about is we will have a project management, uh, team coordinator from TechDOT. And we will get, uh, with them between January and March. They didn't give us specific details on that, but they'll be able to walk alongside us with the continuance of the project. Uh, we are going to coordinate with TechDOT and the Metropolitan Organization, NPO, to begin the process to list the project and the local transportation improvement program document, and then the statewide tip. Uh, after that, we will select a project manager. In the meantime, between time, we are actually, as a team, we're finishing a provisional crossing at Katy Trail right now. So even though the project, um, may not start in the ensuing months, it'll be walkable. We're going to need to do a little additional maintenance. Uh, when construction starts, then of course, that'll, um, residents won't be able to walk on it at that time. Okay, the next slide is what I'm most excited about. Along with, uh, the actual project, um, I get to highlight something that's important to our city, and that's just Team Dennison. Um, what we have here is the addition of two new sculptures at the bookends of Phase 1 of our trail, uh, Waterloo Lake Drive. Uh, the Crowley family generously donated, uh, towards, uh, that sculpture, listed on the left-hand side. And then on the right-hand side, we have the Courtright family, where their sculpture is located off Day Street. And then, of course, we have our local artists that we're so fortunate to have, Jody Costelli and Mark Amy of Kasni Studios. They're the ones who, uh, created that beautiful art. So, uh, with that said, we're just so grateful for this council. We're grateful for our community and everyone who's made this project happen. Um, this is just a project update, so I have no, um, no action at this time, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Eastwood? Well, Justin, it's, um, it's quite ironic that I was reminded for the council meeting that four years ago today, we broke ground for Phase 1 of the Katy Trail. So I think it's very appropriate tonight that we're talking about Phase 2.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you. And forgive me a little out of place, but I should mention, thank you, Councilman Hander, for coordinating the, the art on the trail as well. So we appreciate you all.
That was the easy part. The, Kasni Studio had the hard part for Amber Pilcher. Um, she deserves a round of applause because she, uh, had to deal with me and all the invoices I had to keep straight. And she is great at what she does. There's a fun project.
Yeah, we appreciate you.
I can't wait for the next phase.
Thank you so much.
I've gotten lots of really positive feedback from residents on, uh, on the development and their anticipation of the next phase. So thank you for making this a priority.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you all.
Thank you, Justin. That was an information item only and does not require action by the council. Pursuant to Chapter 551, Texas Government Code, the council reserves the right to convene an executive session from time to time as deemed necessary during the meeting to receive legal advice from its attorney and any posted agenda item as permitted by law, or to discuss the following. Consult with attorney on a matter in which the attorney's duty to the governmental body under the Texas Disciplinary Rules of Professional Conduct conflicts with this chapter, and/or consult with attorney about pending or contemplated litigation or contemplated settlement of the same, Section 551.071. Confer with city attorney regarding City of Dennison versus Sherman Pro Auto Glass LLC, DBA Pro Auto Glass et al., 397 Judicial District, Grayson County, Texas, Cause Number CB21-0166. Confer with city attorney regarding Rogue Pentuso ETJ Release Petition. Confer with city attorney regarding First Amendment to the Preston Harbor Development Agreement between the City of Dennison and Waterfall Development Partners LP, Preston Harbor LP and Preston Harbor Home Place LP. Confer with city attorney regarding ordinance to amend ordinance number 4679 regarding Lake Texoma Municipal Utility District Number 1. Discuss the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment of duties, discipline or dismissal of or to hear a complaint against a public officer or employees, Section 551.074. Annual Evaluation of Municipal Judge. The time is 6:42, and the council is now in executive session. This one is. It won. Are you ready, Chris? The time is 7:22, and council returns to regular session. Confer with city attorney regarding City of Dennison versus Sherman Pro Auto Glass LLC, DBA Pro Auto Glass et al., 397 Judicial District, Grayson County, Texas, Cause Number CB21-0166. No action taken. Confer with city attorney regarding Rogue Pentuso ETJ Release Petition. Mayor Pro Tim?
Mayor, I move that the Rock and Pentuso petition to remove property from the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction be denied because Senate Bill 2038 is unconstitutional, is an unconstitutional delegation of legislative authority, and it conflicts with the city's grant of legislative discretion under Local Government Code, Section 42.023. The city does not consent to the removal of property from its ETJ.
Second.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim and a second by Councilmember Thomas. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Confer with city attorney regarding First Amendment to the Preston Harbor Development Agreement between the City of Dennison and Waterfall Development Partners LP, Preston Harbor LP and Preston Harbor Home Place LP. Mayor Pro Tim?
Mayor, I move to approve the First Amendment to the Preston Harbor Development Agreement and authorize the mayor to execute the First Amendment.
Second.